Okay. I'm Chair Hagerty, and we're going to start this teleconference meeting. You can get, you can contact the meeting using the access codes 120, 658, 4624. And we can also find this meeting at youtube.com/goepcc. First off, I want to welcome everybody to this meeting. We're running a little late, I think because we were having a little IT problem. So I'd like to welcome everybody to this meeting. Do we have any public comments? Pam?
No, sir.
Okay. Can you go ahead and poll the board? Make sure we know who's here.
Yes, sir. Mr. Uxer.
Here.
Mrs. Robles. Dr. Graham. Ms. Peña.
Here.
Ms. Sanchez. Ms. Sanchez.
Okay, I just think that this is, that this is really critical because I'm kind of setting up.
Ms. Nahara. Mr. Hagerty.
Here. I now want to introduce Dr. Penley, Vice President of Research and Accreditation and Plan. She's going to give us an overview of what we're going to do this afternoon.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you trustees for taking the time for this meeting. You all might remember that in October of 2019, you all approved Dr. Sadata to enter into agreement with the Texas Association of School Boards to assist in revising and updating our policies. It's been a little bit of time since that event occurred, and so I would like to walk you through the general process, provide some suggestions for timely completion of this work, and answer any questions that you might have. I will be starting the presentation, but then we will have representatives from TASB join us a little later this afternoon. So TASB is comprised of two sets of policies that we will be working with. One are the legal policies, which are summaries of state law. They are either the law as written, or they are court decisions resulting from lawsuits. And so those policies are consistent across every community college in the state. There's nothing you need to do in terms of approving them. They are the law of the state. In many cases, the legal policies have institution-specific parameters describing how a specific community college will respond to the law. For example, the state law gives boards one of two options for setting the timelines for board elections, or for specifics regarding how to conduct their meetings. And so in those cases, there will be local policies that will be specific to EPCC. Because they are specific to EPCC, you as a board will need to review them and adopt them if you're comfortable doing so. So what I will walk you through, David, if you could pull up the website. Right now, the local policies have been provided into an EPCC portal on the TASB webpage, and you have the address for that portal at the bottom of your agenda. And it looks something like this. So this is a public-facing website, so anybody in the, that's interested can look at these webpages and find these legal policies. Again, right now, these are just populated with the legal statutes. And so as you all begin your work with reviewing and adopting local policies, those local policies will also be fed into this portal. When you all complete your work with the conversion of your current policies into the TASB policies, all of the policies will reside on this website, and the EPCC policies will no longer be housed internally.
Dr. Penley, I'm sorry. This is Christina Sanchez. Hello, this is Christina Sanchez. I just wanted to let you all know that I am on. I understand roll call was called. My computer froze, but I want to make sure that that is at least noted for the record. Thank you. Excuse me.
Thank you, Ms. Sanchez. So also in your board packet, there are two proposed timelines for the board to consider as they go through reviewing the local policies and seeing how they align with your current policies, whether the current policy needs to be amended, or whether it can completely be sunsetted. David, if you could pull up the PowerPoint. And so I am providing these two timelines just for your consideration. Because it is not on this agenda, I will not be asking you to take a vote, but I would like for you to think about the timeline that makes the most sense to you, and what you will be able to manage as you work through this conversion of your current policies. Next page. So the first policy in your packet is labeled "Recommended Schedule." And you'll see in blue why I am recommending this schedule for you. This is in consultation with TASB, who will be joining us later this afternoon. And although this is a very ambitious schedule, this would allow you to go through the entire sequence of local policies, consider them, review them, possibly adopt them before the end of the legislative session. And the reason that that's important is that many times, at the end of the legislative session is when the new laws will be enacted, and we will be expected many times as a community college to revise our policies or our practices in order to be in compliance. So obviously, we don't know what's coming down the pipeline, but TASB does anticipate that they will be required to push an update of policies out by October of 2021. And so looking through this agenda, if you choose to approve it, you would be completing the work by the end of the session in August. I'll stop and say right now that my intent is to follow the current process of providing policies to you during one month's regular meeting for reading, first reading only, and then the second month for vote for possible adoption. So the current process will remain in place. You'll also see at the top of this schedule that I will be presenting in your packet for next week's regular meeting a few local policies for first reading. Those, you'll see, are required because there are some legislative changes that were enacted that we have not yet been able to implement and adopt as formal EPCC policies. And those policies have to do with free speech protections and permissions on campus, and also with title line requirements. So unfortunately, we were starting a little bit behind the curve, but these policies have gone through our legal counsel for their review, and as all local policies do, through TASB's legal review team. And then next month, I will be presenting these same six policies to you for second reading. Then we'll have a break, and we'll continue the work in 2021. Again, providing policies to you for first reading, and then providing the policies again following month for second reading. So I anticipate moving in a consistent pattern and not leapfrogging, where some month you'll be asked to read for first reading and for a second set for second reading. So we'll look at one set of policies at a time. Again, this is a very ambitious calendar. So Scott Hulse, our legal counsel, myself, the TASB team, we're all available to assist in any way that you'd like, if this is a schedule that you are comfortable with. Any questions so far about the recommended schedule?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Are we going to have a meeting on this every time the legislature is over with? Will that keep up with any changes or any laws?
So although this is a very ambitious schedule, once this work is done, then you all have a very easy process for maintaining any updates. So once TASB or the legislature makes an update to policy, I will provide that revised policy to you, just as we would any policy in any board meeting. So there may be an occasional policy that comes to you after this work is done, but it's simply to revise and update something that you've already seen. Does that make sense?
I just want to make sure that any future board, as they run into this problem, where our policies get behind them.
Exactly. And that is certainly my intent as well, that we have a little bit of work to do right now, but once we do this work, then it's simply a matter of maintaining the excellent record-keeping and assuring that we are continuing to be in compliance with the laws. Absolutely.
All right. Dr. Graham would like to ask a question.
Dr. Graham, thank you for the work you're doing on the, over the.
Can you hear me now? Okay, thank you. My question is, well, first of all, I was saying thank you so much for all the work you're doing on this, Dr. Penley, and everybody else that's assisting you. And I know you have an aggressive schedule, but we are like 13 years behind the ball here. So my question to you is this: Is there a regulation or a mandate that dictates that we have to wait one month to read it, and then one month to adopt it? Or is that something that's just like usual procedure or protocol?
Great question. I have found nothing in your bylaws that requires that schedule. I was suggesting that we maintain that schedule, because in all of this work and all of this change, that would be one thing that would be consistent, but it's whatever the board would like to do.
Thank you. And I never found anything either that said that we had to wait a month to read it, and then a month to make a decision on this. So my suggestion, if it can be considered by the board, would be that just the way that you have outlined the policies under the schedule that you gave us, that under each, it would have just a little description of what the policy change would be from the existing, if there's one, to the proposed, and only so that we could expedite the process. And instead of having some that we review for one month and then come back a month later, that you would give us a few more, that we, as board members, have to commit to reviewing them quickly, you know, so that you can catch us up to date. And then we would go back to slowing down and having a month to read each one, because it doesn't take a month for any of us to read the policies. Especially if you have a little description, and that way we would get more of them out of the way, and then you could continue working with TASB on that, and catching us up to date with the ones that are top priority. I think that if we can poll the board members, they would be in agreement to just follow the recommendation by looking if they don't want to read the entire policy, at least just a little bit of the policy as to what the major points are.
Absolutely. And whatever the board would like to implement, or any suggestions, any way that I can facilitate this work. Primarily, I will be the main contact at the college. Obviously, any cabinet member, Dr. Sadata will be available, but I would be available to provide any assistance that you need. Certainly, a summary can be created of what the TASB policy states, and how it aligns with current policies. And I know that you haven't received the agenda yet for the October regular meeting, but for these six policies that I'll be providing to you next week, you'll see in the abstract that there is a summary of what the policy says. And in a few cases, there's not a corresponding EPCC policy, so it's a brand-new document. In other cases, some of those six, if you all choose to approve them, would replace a few of your current policies. So there will be a staggering or a combination of how appearing happens or doesn't happen. But I will rely on the board to tell me what they need to make this work happen. And perhaps as the afternoon goes on, and you hear from the TASB representatives and have some discussion amongst yourselves, those instructions will be a little bit clearer, but whatever you need, just let me know.
Thank you, ma'am. Judge Hagerty, that would be my recommendation, that we expedite the process a little bit more. Thank you.
And what you will notice, I didn't point it out, but in the recommended schedule, in parentheses, you'll see a number. And those numbers correspond to how many documents you would be considering. So, for example, in January 2021, under the recommended schedule, I would be presenting 23 local policies for you to review during that month. And that first batch in January has to do primarily with policies that would eventually replace your current bylaws. Some of our policies, some of your policies that are in the administrative section, and community and governmental relations, which are scattered throughout the policy sections, having to do with, some of it with instructions, some of it with student services, some of it with facilities. But that would be the recommended schedule. I also provided an alternative schedule, which is on the next pages in your packet. David, if you could forward two slides, please. And there you go. So the alternative schedule is still ambitious, but it's at a little bit slower pace. This schedule would not have you completing your work before the legislative session ends, but it would have you completing your work before we submit to SAC COC our next reaffirmation of accreditation. So that's why I chose this specific timeline as an alternative. Again, it would follow the same schedule of providing policies, one month for your first reading, the second month for review and adoption. Still ambitious, but a little bit, a little bit more manageable pace. And then, Dr. Graham, this may answer your question, or it may at least give you additional information. Two more slides down, please. As I mentioned, some of the policies that TASB is recommending, we have a current counterpart. In other cases, there is no current counterpart. And again, at the end of this work, the current policies will all be eliminated. They will either be incorporated into current policies from TASB, or they will go away altogether, maybe be incorporated into our college procedure, or maybe just be dropped off of the books altogether. So this final page in your packet gives you an overview of your current policies, and how I see they map onto TASB. And you'll see at the top, for example, in my review, and I am not an attorney by any means, but in my review of the documents, it looks like 75 of your current board policies could go away today, because they are, the language and the content is completely embedded within TASB legal policies. And again, the legal policies, you don't have to worry about. They are the law. You don't have to vote to approve them. You don't have to adopt them. They are already in that portal that I showed you earlier. Another 100 or so, 107, would probably be incorporated into the local policies that I'll be providing to you during the board meetings. So the overwhelming majority of your policies will probably be able to be transitioned seamlessly. There are a few policies, however, near the bottom of this chart, that I will ask you to consider whether you really would like to keep that policy, even though TASB does not have a recommended counterpart for it, or if you think that that policy maybe has served its purpose and is no longer needed as an internal or local policy.
Dr. Penley, is that number eight? The one that you have as.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
And then you'll notice at the very bottom of that page, I said that those are just your board policies. Your bylaws will also be incorporated into the TASB system. And after working with Francisco at Scott Hulse, it appears as though your board policies, your bylaws, rather, are completely embedded within TASB. And so you don't have to worry about your bylaws either. We will be able to incorporate both the bylaws and the college procedures into the TASB Any questions at this point? Any initial comments or thoughts?
I just have a question, Judge Hagerty, and this would be regarding the implementation, because when I look at the current policies, there's policies and procedures kind of mixed together. Are we going to have that separated somewhat? So that you have only the policies, but the procedures of implementation are separate under regulations? Or has that been discussed at all?
That is an excellent question. And it may be that TASB representatives go into that later this afternoon, but I am coming to you today to talk only about the board policies. The college procedures, we have not entered into an agreement with TASB to take care of those. So we'll be working to align the policies to the TASB system. We will continue to review and monitor and update the college procedures as needed, and we will continue to house those on the college websites. So this is only for the board policies. Any other questions? Okay. So going back to the local policies, these are your EPCC-specific directions or applications of the law. TASB has provided templates that are generally consistent across every community college. The only changes would be typically the role. For example, our CEO is the college president at another institution; it might be a chancellor. But the rest of the language is consistent across institutions, and that's done intentionally. Both the TASB legal team and the institutional legal teams have reviewed the policies, and Scott Hulse is reviewing the TASB local policies as we speak, to ensure that everything is in place as it needs to be. And so to the extent possible, TASB recommends that we adhere to the templates that they have provided. And I know it may be tempting to either do some wordsmithing, or to take out some things to make it a little more personal about our institution, but to the extent that you all are comfortable, they recommend using the templates as provided. So as I said, TASB will walk us through the specifics and the mechanics of that, but if you have any questions about the local policies themselves, as I said, TASB is available to answer questions. I'm available to answer questions. Scott Hulse will also be available to answer any questions. So for right now, what I would ask you to think about, I'm not asking you to vote on anything today, but to think about a schedule that is going to be manageable for you, and to decide how best to approach this work, whether you want to create subcommittees, whether you want all trustees to review all policies, some of the things that Dr. Graham brought up earlier, and any assistance that you think might be helpful in you as you engage in this work. And those are the things. Go ahead.
Pam, you haven't done the agenda yet for next month.
No, sir.
So we have to make sure we have an agenda item to address Dr. Graham's suggestion to vote on which way we're going to go.
Dr. Penley has actually included an item, and that will be in the agenda.
Go ahead. So we have it on the agenda, so we can discuss all this at the next board meeting.
Right. So in your October regular meeting agenda, you'll have these two schedules provided again, and there will be an action item asking you to decide which of these schedules is going to be adopted by the board.
Okay. Thank you.
And those are, those are the only questions that I wanted to share with you right now. Are you familiar, we have some newer trustees, and it's been a little while since we had this initial conversation, do you have any general questions about Tasby that I can answer at this point?
Hi, this is Christina, I do not at this time.
Okay, thank you. All right. Well, that was, that was the initial conversation. Unfortunately, we do not have the Tasby consultant available for about an hour, so I don't know, we have two of our, two of our, you all are excellent students and went through the material very quickly. I don't know if Ms. Marine or Mr. Ortega from Scott Hulse has anything to add at this point.
Hi. Dr. Penley, can you hear me?
Yes.
I don't have anything to add. I'm kind of interested to see what Mr. Rissell has to say, especially with Dr. Graham's question earlier in terms of the interplay between policies and procedures, so we could certainly ask those questions, but other than what you've said, I've got nothing else to add, it was very thorough.
Okay. Thank you. And again, they do not offer services to work with institutions to review their procedures. They are happy to house them on the Tasby site, but we did not even, we did not even enter into that agreement. So our work with Tasby will only be focusing on the board bylaws and the board policies. All right. Well, if there are no further questions or conversation that the board would like to have, we have a very long break in front of us.
So we'll go ahead and we'll take a break until 2:45 is the switch there. Come on, correct? 2:45? 2:45 is the new schedule? All right, we'll need all the board members back online at 2:45.
Good, see you 2:45.
All right, we'll see you 2:45.
We're going to call the roll to see if all of the trustees are on the line. Mr. Wexler.
Here I am, over here.
This is Robus.
Present.
Dr. Graham.
Present.
Ms. Pena.
Present.
Ms. Sanchez.
Here.
Ms. Nahada.
Present.
Mr. Hagerty.
I'm here. Okay. All right, Dr. Penley, if you could introduce our guest.
Of course. So it is my pleasure to introduce Dr. Scott Rizzo. He is our Tasby Policy Specialist. He's been assigned to work with us at EPCC, and with him is Amy McGee, who is the Director of Community College Resources for Tasby.
Welcome.
Hello, everybody.
All right, Doc, you got the floor, either you or Amy.
All right. I just, I see David to give me the control of the presentation, so I don't know if David's there or not. There we go, yeah, there we go.
He's just, he's just waiting on payment.
Okay, hold on one second. Okay. And several of you may have heard a version of this presentation about a year or so ago as you guys were deciding whether to sign on. And now we have reached the point where you all are getting ready to start adopting some of these policies. So we wanted to do kind of a refresher of how this is all going to work. So first, Tasby Community College Services, we have all 50 colleges in the state of Texas are Tasby members with access to legal services. Of that 50, 47 of them subscribe to the CCPRM, which is our legal policies, which I'll talk about more about later. And we now have 40 out of the 50 colleges that either have their policies maintained by Tasby, or they're in the process of doing so, like you all are, or they have signed a contract for future work in that area. So we continue to grow the number of colleges that are working with us on local policy, and we now have, you know, arguably the vast majority of the Texas community colleges that work with us on that. So amongst the services that we offer, we do offer legal services. Administrators for El Paso community colleges can call and talk to one of our attorneys by phone who can give them advice related to legal issues that they may be having. We also have some other resources available, such as the Tasby College E-Law on our Tasby website, on the community colleges portion of the website. We have a bunch of FAQs that give some answers about different topics, you know, such as governance and personnel, and of course, most recently coronavirus. So we have a lot of things like that. We also do periodic trainings, obviously not many in person lately, but you know, sometimes in person, sometimes in these kinds of settings. So we do offer a lot of legal services that El Paso community college can take advantage of. And then we offer policy services. So we have the Community College Policy Reference Manual, that is all of our legal policies that you all have been subscribing to for a while now. And then, secondly, we have the Local Policy Manual Development and Maintenance, which is what you guys are starting to work on now. And then we have Policy Online, which I'll talk more about later, but that's where you can access policies. So let's go through some basics on this. So what is the purpose of written policy? So policies provide directives for college employees, for students, and for community members, so they know what they are supposed to do in various situations. Policy shows that a college is fair, is reasonable, not arbitrary or capricious, and it provides a legal basis for actions. And they also help colleges operate efficiently and consistently across time, across different personalities, different people that work at or run different departments at the colleges, and across different situations that come up, as of course, we've often been dealing with recently. And it also, policy meets the legal requirements and SAC's COC expectations for governing board to fulfill their policymaking role. So there's a lot of different reasons why written local policy is really important. This is what our policy manual looks like. We break it up into an A through G. A is Basic District Foundations, that's a short section that covers things like your mission statement, your goals and objectives. The B section is Local Governance, so that's going to be all the aspects of the board, elections, meetings, also covers the president, chancellor, DVs as well. The C section is Business and Support Services, so revenues, budgets, accounting, purchasing, et cetera, facilities as well. The D section is Personnel, so compensation benefits, employment, professional development, evaluations, those sorts of things. The E section is Instruction, so curriculum, graduation requirements, et cetera. F is Students, so admissions, transfers, records, conduct, student conduct, rights and responsibilities, some of those things are covered. And then finally, the G section is Community and Government Relations, so that's public information and community relations. So that's kind of how we break that up. So again, there's sort of three different areas when we talk about policy. We have Legal Policy, and legal policies are summaries of the law. And again, these are the same documents that we provide you in the CCPRM, and they, these are the versions, these are policies that are not adopted by the board. Every college has, that subscribes to our CCPRM has identical legal policies. These just provide a legal guideline to help inform your local policy. So then, secondly, you have the local policies, these are the board-adopted mandates, and so these are the policies that you need to adopt at board meetings and/or adopt changes to as needed as you go along. And then lastly, you have Administrative Regulations, and these document how a college carries out what's legally required in board policy. So some colleges call those procedures, others call those regulations. These are not published in your, online, on Policy Online, these are not part of your, it's not what we offer, these are things that you would maintain administratively. So it's up to your administration to come up with these procedures and regulations to go with the local policies that we're helping you guys adopt. So localization, that's the process that you all are in right now, that's what we call it. So typically, the process takes between 12 to 18 months to complete. We started the process, I guess it was last, maybe, was it March? Whatever the case, it was pretty close to the time period that then was taken over for all of us by the coronavirus. So I know Dr. Penley has been working hard behind the scenes, as I've provided her with a lot of the model policies, and she's been working on those, but I know, but now we're at the point where you guys will be able to be involved in adopting the policy. And I know Dr. Penley's been putting together sort of a calendar to going forward to make sure that you guys are on a really good timeline to be able to get all of this adopted in the next, in the next year. So Policy Manual localization, let's go over sort of the basic steps of how this is going to work. So we, the development of Local Policy Manual is divided into three phases for the ease of processing. So so far, where we're at is I have provided Dr. Penley with Phase 1 and Phase 2 of our model policies, and I will be sending her Phase 3 of the model policies later this week. So by the end of the week, you guys will have all of our model policies as they, as they look at this point. And then the college administrators, again led by Dr. Penley, review these, these local policies, the model versions that we send, that I've sent to her, and she can ask questions to me and obviously to, amongst administrators, to figure out what changes, if any, need to be made to what we've provided. And then oftentimes, Dr. Penley will provide me with drafts as necessary, you know, if she's made any changes to it, and then, you know, I can, that will allow me a chance to look them over. If she ever has legal questions related to that, she can potentially ask one of our Tasby attorneys for help relate to policy. And then once she sends that to me, if needed, I will then send back my comments on that. I'll even, I may say that, oh, it looks great, it's fine, or I may have a concern, and I'll let her know and we'll work through sort of how to move forward with that. And then finally, as far as the legal review, our attorneys, our Tasby attorneys do not substitute for thorough legal review by the college's local council prior to board adoption. So it's important that your local council is consulted, which I know they have been because I've spoken with them already a couple of times related to some of these first policies that you guys are going to be working through. So I know that they are definitely part of the process. And then, once, once you guys have adopted, you know, then it will get to the step of, okay, you guys will adopt these policies, and then once they're adopted, then I will process these policies. And you got, obviously, you guys are going to be doing it in sort of a step-by-step manner, and I'll work with Dr. Penley as to sort of how often we'll be posting the policies once you've adopted, whether we're going to post them sort of as you adopt or wait until there's larger chunks, but we'll work on, Dr. Penley and I will work on that to figure out what's best. Once you're completely done, we will mail you an official hard copy of all the policies because you're required to have one hard copy, and then you'll be able to maintain that as we go along. And then your entire manual will also be published electronically on Policy Online, which again, I'll talk a little bit more about. Once you have finished the localization, then there's continued maintenance that's necessary with the policies. So there's two ways in which changes are made to policy. One is the Tasby numbered updates. Twice a year, we do updates to policies as needed based on changes in law, or changes in administrative code, or things of that nature. Our largest one is typically after the legislative session is ended, for obvious reasons. So we, so twice a year, we are working on a project to get these all updated, and then we send you the new versions of the policies. And then, again, it's your job to, then, you know, your administration to look through them, make sure that you're good with all the changes we've made, and then if so, or you're going to make changes if needed. And then eventually, those are then adopted again by the board with the changes, because of, usually again, updates to laws or code, and then, and then you're good again going forward. The second way in which policy is updated is local district updates. These are updates that are initiated by the college. So maybe something has changed in how you guys are operating, or you're doing something different, you've changed who you want to be responsible for something, or you've, you know, reorganized in some way, or whatever the case may be. Sometimes you will initiate a change to policy, and then if you've done that and adopted a new version of that policy, we will then process that for you and again, post it on Policy Online. And typically, Dr. Penley will let me know sort of before you're planning to adopt something new, so that I can kind of give you a heads up if I think there could be a problem related to that. Finally, Policy Online, I've mentioned that a few times. That is our quick, easy access to our, to college's policy manual. You'll have a, you have a link on your website, and we maintain a website for you that has all... And we maintain a website for you that has all of your policies on it. It'll have all the legal policies on it. And eventually, you will have all the local policies on it. And anyone will be able to access that. So any staff, any students, community members will all be able to access that on your website. It has a search tool so that people can look for topics on there. And you'll be confident that your mail is up to date on there. And then, of course, you'll not have lost time and expense related to maintaining a bunch of different hard copies. And of course, it's by far the easiest way to distribute the policies. You don't have to email them out and send them necessarily. You can just point everybody to the website. And that is my presentation. So do you have any questions?
Dr. Penley, do you have questions?
Thank you, Dr. Rizzo. Not so much a question, but can you clarify what happens should a board decide to adjust a local policy or perhaps to write a local policy that is not, for which a template is not provided by TASB?
Yeah. So yeah, that's another option you guys have. So, you know, it would be the same situation, you know. Usually, Dr. Penley will sort of give me the heads up that, hey, there's a policy that maybe either doesn't, isn't one of the models that we sent you. There are a lot of topics that we don't necessarily have a model policy for because not every college needs that particular policy. But if El Paso has a need for that policy because of the way that it's organized or has, you know, some specific need for it, then obviously, we are open to that. So it would be, in a way, the same as most of it. The only difference being that we wouldn't provide a model. So you guys would develop a policy, and you'd want to develop it, try to develop it in sort of the style in which we've provided policies for you so that kind of looks the same. And then, you know, again, you would just send it to me, and I could kind of look it over and see if I have any feedback for you to help. And but if all is good, then you then go forward and adopt that policy, just like any other policy.
No. I do have a question. I'm sorry, was there somebody else that had a question? No? Okay. I do have a question, sir. How long is it from adoption to posting electronically? What does the process entail and how quickly can we see that it's going to be up on the website?
It varies depending on sort of what's going on and/or how extensive your changes are. We usually say, give us a couple of weeks. Oftentimes, if it's a very minor change, it might only take a few days. So somewhere in that vicinity is what I would say.
Okay. And then, my next question is, in our contractual obligations with you all, did we include some staff training and support so that we can have a way to bring everybody on board as to the changes that are being made and how to access the information? Or is that going to be expected to be done locally by the college staff?
So as part of your contracts, you have sort of up to three sort of training opportunities. Typically, what would happen, the way we usually do things is that we would make, you know, we would have made an in-person visit around this time. And I would have done, you know, Amy and I would have done a presentation for you guys, the board. And then, Dr. Penley would have organized a presentation with administrative staff to talk to them also about this. Instead, of course, we're doing it remotely, so I'm talking to you guys first. And I think Dr. Penley down the line will have me talk to the administrative staff. And it'll be a similar presentation as this, but a bit longer and more involved since they'll be involved in some more mechanics behind the scenes. And then, so that combination would be your first training opportunity. And then, you'd have up to two others as needed that's part of your contract. So if people needed a refresher later on or had a specific need related to policy that they wanted me to train on, then I would be available to do that.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have any other questions?
Hi, this is Christina. I do have a question. So how is this going to be rolled out and presented to the entire administration, the rest of the college, right? So I understand that we have to go through this process of the policy reviewing them, getting it approved by the board, but is there a plan to message this out? I would hope so, just by the fact that it's really going to be a huge, I think, change. It's going to be new, and I would hope that we could kind of make some of that. Do you have any insight or information on that? And what that plan would look like for the rest of the college?
I would kind of defer to your administration on that as far as sort of what the messaging they want to be as. Okay, good, yeah.
So Ms. Sanchez, I will work with Dr. Sarata for his suggestions. Off the top of my head, I would put out a communication plan through my department. We also have Staff Development Day coming up in February. And so, that would be another opportunity to engage the entire EPCC community. I will also be posting some things on our website where people would typically go to look for board policies right now to explain the transition and to ensure that they understand where the policies can be found while we're going through this one.
And I do have another question. So in terms of the legal services that are offered by TASB, how is that going to get coordinated? Is there going to be a point person who would be the individual who was asking those questions from TASB Legal? Is that going to be facilitated or filtered through with our own legal counsel here? Just a couple of observations. My take, at least on that, is that there is some organized effort in which those questions are facilitated. And the reason being is, I don't want, and not that I'm saying that this will happen, but I would like to avoid maybe individual staff members or administrators going straight to TASB for an interpretation or a legal question and it not be, I would think, properly vetted as well with our hired legal help counsel here so that there is not inconsistency in any legal opinion that is rendered or that there's not also the opportunity there where you are shocked, and I'll just, you know, I'm just speaking frankly here, that you don't like a particular legal answer, and so you're going somewhere else to get maybe the answer that you want. So that would be my feedback to that. We could consider how to best organize that so that there is a consistent, again, message and interpretation on some of these rules because they're really important if, you know, if we're looking at how these impact our staff and if we're looking at this any time that we may be sued in the future, I'd like to ensure as much as possible that there's consistency in that, in those opinions.
Ms. Sanchez, it's a really great point. This is William. I agree with you wholeheartedly. What we would do is, much as when we brought in Scott Holes, we developed procedures, internal procedures, of who was able to contact Scott Holes, you know, which individuals at the institution would be contacting and who it would be funneled through. So I would suggest that we do the same. I'll work with Dr. Penley and her team. That any legal question be first vetted by Scott Holes by internal counsel or our hired contracted counsel, rather. And then, after that, I would prefer that they be the ones to reach out to TASB on legal questions on behalf of the college.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mind, I'll go ahead and just perhaps reassure you a bit as far as what the legal services that we do provide at TASB. The legal services are part of your membership just simply to TASB. So yes, college decision-makers can call on behalf of the college to ask questions. And you certainly can set up what policy you want. To the extent that people ask us legal questions that perhaps are needing more specificity of being on the ground, et cetera, we always reassure the caller that we defer to local counsel. So certainly, if local counsel was to have a particular opinion, we would regularly say legal counsel is who is on the ground providing advice to you and would be there for you if you were to be sued. And so certainly, we're more so of kind of a more generalist sort of opportunity for a call.
Thank you. Those were my questions. I'm done.
We have on the books... Am I muted? My question is, now that you've had an opportunity to see what we have and the direction that we're going, how long do you anticipate this transition will take place? I realize that we will have additional policies, but the transition from the existing system that we have in place to the TASB system, how long would that more or less take us from now? That's for Dr. Rizzo?
Oh, for me? Okay, I'm sorry. I thought that was for Dr. Penley. So, Dr. Penley, I have talked a little bit about that. And it's really, there's, one of the options we talked about was, you know, since you guys are going to be adopting policies kind of as we go, that once you've adopted policies, then, and we decide that we're going to put a certain amount of them onto our Policy Online system, then those policies will be there. There may be a period where sort of some of your policies are on TASB Policy Online and others are on your existing system. And so, that transition will sort of be a gradual one as you're adopting policies and as we're processing them. Eventually, you know, they'll all be onto Policy Online. I think the, you know, Dr. Penley, she's talked to you yet about the potential calendar timeline, but I know, you know, that the goal is sort of by the end of the summer to have all the policies adopted. So at that point, then you have sort of a full transition to fully all of your policies being on Policy Online.
Thank you. Any other questions?
No questions from the board? Okay. Dr. Penley, have anything else you want to tell us? You have anything else you want us to hear from? You got to mute yourself.
Okay. So, Dr. Rizzo, I did provide the board both the recommended and the alternate calendar for adoption. And I explained a little bit about the benefits of moving through the recommended calendar to be done with the conversion by the end of August. So at this point, the board is going to think about what is going to be feasible for them, balancing the importance of getting the work done with the manageable workload. And then, I think that that will be our direction. And then, you and I will be in touch. And as Ms. Sanchez recommended, coming up with the communication plan both internally for college employees and for the students and for the public, and also how EPCC can communicate with TASB on any legal questions. But that's all that I have. If anybody else has anything to add, any points of clarification?
Dr. Sarata, you have anything else to say?
No, Judge Hagerty, I just want to thank Dr. Penley for moving this forward. We have talked about it consistently at our cabinet meetings. That'll be a part of the communication plan that we move forward. Ms. Sanchez is absolutely correct. We'll have to make sure. Right now, we've developed significant number of policies based on COVID with Scott Holes moving us forward and even those policies. Everyone is somewhat on edge right now. We certainly understand why. But we've been very clear in our communication, and yet, we still get some questions that are somewhat from left field. And again, to me, it's a sign of everyone's disconcertedness of the events that we're in. So we'll make sure that we communicate and over-communicate and do it one more time because we know that folks are nervous, and we certainly appreciate that. But this is the direction, Dr. Graham, I know that you've pushed for for quite some time. And again, with Scott Holes' guidance and Dr. Penley leading this particular effort, we're moving it forward.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
I don't have a question. I do have a statement. I really appreciate Dr. Sarata, Dr. Penley, the board members, all of us moving forward. I know it's going to be uncomfortable for a while because we're moving the cheese a little bit. But I think once it is all said and done, we will be very happy with it. I've had very good experience personally working with TASB. And, you know, I am anxious to see the final product that we will come to. So I'm excited that we're finally moving it forward. Thank you all.
Okay. Well, thank you, Dr. Rizzo, and thank you, Ms. McGee. And I guess we'll see each other at the next board meeting.
Thank you all.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all. Stay safe.
Will do.
They can guide us on this. But in terms of the calendar, do we need to take official action? Can we just not make a consensus, give her the direction so she can start doing this so we don't have to wait till next week? Or did we need more opportunity to discuss that in terms of where do we want to go? My sense is we get it done sooner, so I'm okay with the second schedule that was presented. That's my take. I don't see the need to wait.
So regardless of which plan or which schedule the board chooses to adopt, the schedule is the same across the two calendars through the end of the year. So my work is going to be the same between now and December 31st. So during the next board meeting or the upcoming board meeting, we can discuss the expediency because it's going to be an action item, Ms. Sanchez. So that would work?
It was just my failure to put this as an action item today.
That's okay.
So that's what happened.
That's okay. We'll just talk about it at the regular board meeting. Okay, thank you. Are you okay with that, Ms. Sanchez?
Sure. I just didn't see the need to actually have action. I mean, I don't know. I think we give our staff or the college administration's direction, and they can go with it. I mean, whatever. I mean, if you have action, you make it part of the record. But we have given consent and direction before in the past so that they can move forward. Unless there's anything else that they need to provide in terms of additional information or, you know, we want to digest the drill that was presented today, I could see the need to wait. Otherwise, I mean, my personal opinion is we just give them the direction right now and move it along.
And I think Dr. Penley will work on the expediency, which is kind of the consensus, and then present it to us at the regular board meeting. And we can discuss it further there. If we agree or want to expedite it more, we can express our opinion at that time.
Is there more information that will be presented next week that's different from today?
There, there will be no more, no additional information presented next week other than the, the six policies themselves. But I, I can double check with Francisco and Scott Holes, but I, because these are your policies, I feel that you all should be setting the pace, as it were, setting the calendar for it. That, that it would not be my place to say, here's what you will do on your policies. But, but I'll confer with Francisco to see if that's appropriate.
Any other comments, anything else? If not, then we will discuss it further at the next, or the upcoming board meeting. Thank you, everybody.
Great to see you, everyone. Thank you. We'll see you next week. Bye.
Bye, everyone. Bye-bye.
Bye, Bonnie.
All right, ladies.
Thank you, Mazz.